This is the county. This is the county providing first or second reading and third reading to 2023-05 to repeal and replace with county, town authority item. So we'll give a second and third.
Great.
I can make some adjustments.
Thank you. Thank you. Favor? Is Carrie, can I get a motion for the third reading? Thank you. Kelly, on favor? That is Carrie. And then regarding the bylaw 2023-06, can I get a motion for the second reading on that one?
And that one's just to repeal it.
To repeal, correct. Motion to second reading?
I can make that motion.
I'd like to make that motion. Anything we can do by resolution, we can do via bylaw. Doing it via resolution, by law repealing it and replacing with a resolution makes it, plans make it simpler for continuity and clarity of what agreements we do or don't have with our neighboring municipalities in our case, Liddell County. Doing it via a resolution makes it less obvious, less apparent, easier to ignore, harder to find. I don't understand the benefit short of ease of updating it, but it's good that it requires some effort to update it so that whoever's sitting at this table, whether it's us or three councils from now, is very aware and is forced to understand what the agreements as a whole may or may not be. I don't understand the benefit of switching to a resolution instead of a bylaw.
The municipal government act.
It also states that anything that we are allowed to do by resolution, we can do by bylaw though.
So I can go, I can't answer that question necessarily tonight without going in digging into the MGA. The province on this one made it specifically clear that they prefer the resolution approach, and it definitely does make it easier for our members. We are still bound by the legislation that we have to have one of these. The document itself requires that if we review, and so it still has to happen. The other point that I would say is Liddell County has already passed the repeal of this. So they've already completed that, and without theirs being in place, they have to be approved in the same manner. So if they have repealed their bylaw and adopted by resolution, if we choose to go the opposite way and say we still want it by bylaw, Liddell County will have to go back, repeal their resolution, and redo the public hearing process to do that. And so that would be an administrative and council approval process with Liddell County. It's not impossible, but it will take time.
I just, I have never seen such language. I just go, you know, I'm happy to use second reading, also fourth, third reading of repealing it. It'd be nice to get some actual clarity on the language whereby it must be, I mean, yes, we, prior to, you know, to how we have to both have it in place, and it was required to be bylaw, I've never seen the language whereby they must be both done in the same manner. Liddell County has theirs by resolution, great. Ours is by bylaw, great. We both still have it. I don't necessarily see the conflict, and anything we can do by resolution, we can do via bylaw as well.
I can find that language, and for these documents, they just have to be issued. So I can look into the MGA and find you that information.
That would be fantastic.
So going forward on this then, so do we want to give it second reading but not the third, or do we want to?
How does that count?
So that was, that was what my preference would be, just to pray it by, it's better if it's in a bylaw, than if it's forced to be considered as a third reading.
Okay.
Can we come back to the third reading by the end of tonight's meeting? If Liddell can present the language.
I think you guys can do whatever you want. I mean, majority vote wins. That's my, my personal view on it, and yes, if there's language that says as such, I'd be happy to, you know, vote accordingly. I just have never seen such language.
I agree. Okay, so, okay, so I guess we'll, we'll take, take a motion for the second reading.
Tracy, I didn't make it. I was just speaking.
Yeah, you already spoke it. Good, yeah. So all in favor? That's Carrie. And a motion for the third reading.
You can.
Yep. We've only done, we did one, the previous was only, you can do two readings at one time. So if I can get a motion for the third reading?
It's a majority here.
Oh, so we're just trying to pass it without?
Yeah. That was fine. Okay.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, here's Liz. So I haven't done that yet, but in terms of enforcement of this, the MGA, section 708.32, step 1, the municipalities that are party to a framework must review the framework at least every five years after the framework is created, or within a shorter period of time, five, four, in a framework. We have to look at this regardless of how it's approved. We cannot just go, eh, I don't want it. That review in five years might be, eh, we don't need to do anything, but we are legislatively required, and the language is in the ICS that it has to be. And then, so this is 708-33, step 1, method of creating a framework. In order to create a framework, the municipalities that are to be parties of the framework must each adopt a bylaw or resolution that contains the framework. So there's going to be another section in the MGA, and I'm likelihood, and that one will take me some more time to dig for, that will talk about how these need to be the same process for approval, but it does say must each adopt a bylaw or resolution that contains the framework. Regardless of how it's adopted, we must do the five-year review. That is a requirement. We cannot, we can do it quicker than that if something changes. For example, if we created a new agreement on how we're going to grade our travel roads, and the county's going to do all of our roads, just a fictitious example. We could do it sooner to include that agreement, but we don't have to. But five years is your maximum turnaround.
So as far as the hearing now today, I mean, we've obviously met that requirement because we clearly reviewed it because there's two readings of bylaw and books and agenda, so we've met the review here for right now. Moving forward though, it's a lot easier to ignore a resolution than a bylaw, and it's a lot easier to ensure that that five-year review next time comes along when it's in a bylaw as opposed to a resolution. And the wording that I just heard was bylaw or resolution.
Yeah.
So as far as I'm concerned, it should stay a bylaw because it would ensure a higher level of consideration for future administration and council. I just don't understand the benefit of devolving it to a resolution.
I can add to it that I personally don't believe that it devalues it by approving it by resolution. We are still bound by the MGA, and that review has to happen. Secondly, if that is the route we're going to take, I do not recommend passing third reading because the language in the document now talks about approval by resolution. So we will have to go back to Liddell County and renegotiate this piece of it, and they will have to, what they've approved will not be consistent. The two documents have to be identical where we will approve. So we will have to go back to Liddell County and do additional negotiations on rewording of that section.
That's not the wording I heard, but I mean, I guess either way, you have to do what you want to do, but that is not how I interpret the wording that you just read.
I mean, I don't.
I'm sorry, I'm not talking about the wording I just read. I'm talking about in the ICS itself, it talks about how it's approved by resolution. So if we've approved it by bylaw and they're approving it by resolution, we can't finish approving this, and they will have to, one, enter into negotiation with us, which may or may not happen. We don't know how they will feel about that. And then, two, they will have to go through potentially a new public hearing process or a new resolution that will reflect revised language.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, it is.
And I mean, you've got other councils that are waiting for the other municipalities to do the same reading.
I would say 99% of municipalities that I've worked with, and with IDPs and ICS, I've written over 50 of each province, they are all moving to the resolution process. Or the ICS, IDPs must be bylaw and continue that way.
Okay. Any other discussion? Or are you getting anything else? Okay, that's all. If I can get a motion to the third reading of 2023-06?
I can make that motion.
Favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. All right, new business. We will go on to 8.1, the meeting schedule. See, Donna, you want to talk to that?
Thank you, Your Worship. Basically, we adopt a meeting schedule. Of course, the council knows, and September 27th, an updated meeting schedule has passed the motion to 2009 to 10. That line is up to 27th for both to be the whole and for regular. So they're proposing the following dates until the October organizational, and there of course July 11th to be the whole, 25th regular, so forth. And then our organizational meeting will be on October 24th, and that way we set the next year for council committees, council, council issues, so forth. So we're recommending that, asking for a motion to create the first, that future reading date until October 24th.
Yeah, I'm assuming there's any prompts for any of these dates, so I'd be happy to move to accept that schedule.
Thank you. Favor? That is Carrie. Item 8.2, transfer of the Gorgor Banford proceeds to reserves. So Cindy Van Leest, would you like to speak to this on?
Yeah, so as we all know, we have the Gorgor Banford concert on May 6th. The purpose of that concert was to raise the money to help make our new roof for the aging recreational complex. So our sponsor graciously donated Gorgor Banford, and he put on a great show for everybody. After all, or so the all-ticket sale proceeds, liquor proceeds, and 50/50 proceeds were donated to the town's sorbet. The final tally after all revenue received and expenses paid is $45,929.25. So I'm asking county to move this money to reserve, to preserve it for a season of a new roof when that project is initiated.
Thank you. Just, like, was there any costs or expenses incurred by the town that we should be considering subtracting for?
It's already, it's the amount.
Yeah, all of our costs to the town are accounted for in that total?
And if anything more pressing comes up that's needed of complex, can it be for something other than the roof? What's the word? September is the number one. How is the framework?
Yeah, Tracy, like capital money, council, yeah, we can say to use it for, you know, if it's in the rec reserve, we should be keeping in rec or whatever, but yes, as council, you can say, well, the more pressing thing should use that money over the rec.
All right. Any other discussion in there? Scott, can I get a motion to transfer this to capital reserves?
I can make that motion.
Just to clarify, the recreation specifically?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, to recreation specifically, yeah.
For the different reserve accounts.
For recreation.
Okay, there we go. All right, so we have the motion from Sally. Favor? That is Carrie.
Do you have to interrupt on a point of order?
Of course.
We, I have to interrupt on a point of order, I think.
Sure.
We repealed the ICS, but we never have a resolution to approve anyone. We need to go back and do that.
Okay.
It's important to look at technicalities.
All right, so we're, we're here to go now.
You need to do a resolution to approve the ICS as per that.
All right. Somebody would like to make that motion?
I can make that motion.
Tracy, favor?
Just a couple of wording.
All right. We'll get there, Your Worship. All right. No, that's my problem. All right. 8.3, community grant application Christmas in the village. So we have a application here from Thursday Chamber of Commerce for $500 out of our fund there. There's any questions from anybody on towards this? I think if you look at the whole, whole budget they have, their budget last year was $7,300. Any questions, anything? A motion to go ahead with the application to provide $100 to Thursday Chamber for the Christmas in the village?
I can make that motion.
Shall I? Favor? That's Carrie. All right. 8.4, capital project fund relocation. See, Donna, do you want to speak to that, or do you want Kelly to speak towards it?
I would appreciate probably speaking to them.
Good.
So basically what this is, is Thorazine Myer Hockey have approached us to be a partner, having funds that we could offer to this partner on any tour of work. So the score clock is original to the facility. It's on its last life, like it often breaks down during games and whatnot. I, so I didn't obviously have this in my capital project, but our arena lighting project did come in under budget. So what I'm really proposing, I guess, after asking council to see if we can go post that capital project and move the excess fund, which is $6,000, allocate for the management purchase of the score clock. There will also be looking at doing a sound system at the same time with it, but those funds will 100% come out of Thorazine Myer Hockey because they wouldn't be in more app. That's what we try to, I'm not complaining.
So they would take the extra $492.47?
No, no.
No?
No, I mean, the cost of the sound system on top of that.
Oh, I see.
The minimum cost, the minimum cost of the score clock is 12, 492. It will come in higher than that though, because there's a couple accessories and insulation, so it'll probably come in around 13.5, I'm guessing.
I see.
So, and then the sound system would be in addition to that, but we don't have the cost on that, but I'm just asking that we, $6,000 that's left over from the arena lighting, we allocate it towards direct to that. So it's, I mean, dollars are already approved. My other capital projects are coming in under budget so far, so that's an avenue of the way to support them. And I think it's a good time to consider supporting them because they are merging with the two neighboring towns, we're working on a town lot, so right now their bank account are individuals, but they won't pay that way.
How long is this?
It might be an opportunity for, you know, to have the Thorazine application of money in part.
Gotcha.
Might not be so easy, maybe a year or two years because it'll be joint, one joint account.
So how long is for them to install this if they decide to go ahead? Would they get it before the start of hockey season?
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with the company, I'm the president of Thorazine Myer Hockey.
Anybody have any questions in here, discussion? Scott, can I get a motion to allocate the $6,000 to Thorazine Myer Hockey to be used for scoreboard sound system upgrade?
I'm in motion.
Thanks, John. Favor? That's Carrie. You're welcome. All right. So the AMA is open, the registration is open already for September 27th, 29th. I know that the, after August the 18th, price goes up another $155. And I believe Cindy, if you can help me out on this here, we've got money, how much money do we have allocated in the budget for this?
Conference fee or not?
Okay.
But this includes everything, not just the conference fee. Right? So your mileage, the distance, we have mileage. So the mileage would come out of there, but I think your hotel.
I guess what I would ask, who wants to go? I know I can't make it. I actually might want to, I know the rural one has in November, and my thinking actually is that, you know, if we had a couple people attend the AMA, and then we also attended the, we'd get, have reports on both of those, because I know that the rural one is picking up a little bit more speed. You know, they've had the premier speaking last year, and they have, I don't know, see if Donna, do you want to make any comments on that?
Well, yeah, premier, thanks, premier Smith at Card spoke with the RA and RMA, and they're a little more attuned to a, to a resolution to benefit small communities. AUMA, there's nothing wrong with going, but I don't have any issue, I don't have any judgment about AUMA, but the RMA, their resolutions are bound for municipalities counties like us, and it has a little more impact. And also the smaller gathering, in all honesty, you get a chance to meet more folks, and you get a chance to meet more of the close at the RMA, so it makes more sense, a convertible urban rural interface. It's, I prefer the RMA, actually. I like a vote, like, for the RMA for municipality our side, if we want to get to revolutions, share revolutions with other counties and small municipalities. That's, that's where you're going to get this bank for your buck about change, and because we've got an infrastructure deficit happening here, and it's come out as well that the President of AUMA wants more infrastructure money for urban rural municipalities, but the RMA is going to be on that too, and we have a, we have a stronger voice. So it's, it's time that advocating for the government to stop giving us pittance, I guess. So both are fine. I just think that both would be good.
I guess I'd ask, like, who wants to go?
Tracy and I would like to go.
Yeah, but if it's not affordable, it's not affordable, so it also happens to budget attached.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I think if we send two representatives, and possibly if we have enough left over, send two to the RMA, I think we, you know, so you guys are all okay with that? Now, I guess the other, the other question in here is that in the past, I know that we paid mileage and then people go every day, but we didn't get the hotel rooms, and I know it's been a little, a controversy, but I mean, if you're going to sit there and you're going to be there all night, I think personally that you should have a hotel room. I don't know what everybody's thinking of that, so.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think myself, I can get a possibly cheaper hotel room through a connection and be able to save some money there, and the mileage would equal, I think.
I think so. If you're looking driving every day for $70, and you're looking, you know, $100, $150 a day for, for a room, and you come in in the morning and you're tired, and you're there because it starts pretty early, and then there's a few things in the evening, and some tell marketing, and all that stuff, so. I guess I would ask for a motion then to send, sorry, and Tracy, votes for the AMA convention on September the 29th, and that they would find the most cheapest combination they can and go from there.
Not such. That's reasonable.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay. All in favor?
We get road.
That is Carrie. All the girls do us good, and we'll, we'll be looking for a report when you come back.
We'll take notes.
Yes.
Do you guys register us that, or do we register?
We register.
Okay, I know the prior CAO did register.
You have your own credit card. You didn't have credit card.
If, if you want, if you want, I mean, I guess I could, I could make that one. You guys want to do that one?
You want to follow that up? If you don't have the, you know, the option to.
Just let me know. I can do the registration.
We can run your first by file before. Because then we can pick our stuff to register.
That's right. It's easier if you register in all honesty, then you can take your time.
I know it's open right now, and like I say, after August 18th, there's a gush of more, so.
I think the previous CAO took care of it. Because Alan always took care of me.
All right. Thank you for that. Item 8.6, proclamation for recreation and parks. So it's just a proclamation that we have received to, for example, so if I can get a motion to proclaim the month of June as recreation and parks. Favor? That is Carrie. Now, land use amendment, 9.1. So, basically, Donna, you want to turn it over to Liz? Liz, you want to just talk to us, address to this for us again? We'll, I'll pursue this.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Bylaw, we have two land use bylaw amendments in front of us tonight for first reading. So the first one is bylaw number 2023-07, amendment to land use bylaw 2017-02. Bylaw 2017-02, the town of Thursday land use bylaw is approved on April 11th, 2017. We have an application from GNN Development for a land use bylaw amendment, specifically to lot 1A, block 1, plan 0525407, also known as 510250. The applicant proposes to reduce the front yard setback in order to provide a larger setback at the rear of the property, which is adjacent to the railway line. The property is currently zone C2. That zone is proposed to stay the same. The lot is currently surrounded by lines to the north that are C2, and the east and west that are C1. Oh, sorry, C2 to the northeast and west, and C1 to the south. The MDP, bylaw 2016-17, indicates the subject property is direct control, which is previous, which is a previous designation from when the land use bylaw was placed, when that bylaw was done. The future land use concept in the NDP is based off that map, and honestly, it should be updated to reflect the current land use map at some point. So it's not 100% consistent there, but the application has indicated the intention to subdivide and develop a commercial building on the subject property. Through the building design process, the applicant has determined the required front yard setback of 7.5 meters is not ideal for the site. Furthermore, the site is directly adjacent to an active railway, and the applicant and administration strongly recommend changing that setback so that ultimately a building that is built there will be closer to the road rather than closer to the train. They are proposing a 1.5-meter front yard setback, which will result in approximately 18-meter rear yard setback. Parking would be accommodated on-site at the rear of the building. The actual development permit that will go through does not come to council, just to point of clarity, that is an administrative path. So the recommendation is, administration recommends this amendment, and what we are proposing is changing the minimum front yard setback, you'll see it in red in the report, adjacent to the railway to 1.5 meters. So that would affect any one building along the railway. And minimum front yard setback, all others will continue to be that 7.5 meter. And so administration is recommending first reading at this point in time, and we are also recommending that the bylaw be advertised for two consecutive weeks on the town website and below the newspaper. And administration recommends holding a public hearing for bylaw 023-07 on August 22nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM. And we want to note that alternatively, as people who are applying for these don't really love long delays in the process, we do need time to circulate, and an option could be for council to hold a special council meeting after the committee of the whole earlier in August. I don't know that date.
Yeah, I was going to say on the 8th there, like, for the next item on the agenda here, that's what was occurring was special meeting on the 8th. Maybe it'd be nice to do them all, like, get it done that's much sooner and do it both at the same time.
And we should support that.
Yeah, would you do that?
Yes.
Sure. All right. So, so your first, you want to, you want to, sorry, go ahead.
Can somebody clarify, is it an active railway line or inactive?
Technically it's active.
Okay.
We don't see trains on it, but technically tracks could go down. It has not been decommissioned.
Okay.
So, do we see trains there? No. Could we? Technically, yes. Well, that's why we, we talked about that use of the word quite a bit. They still test the signal, so it has not been decommissioned. Yes, it will be.
And unlikely their, their five-year list to decommission, so it's been a five-year list since 2001.
Yeah. But here's, here's their decade, you know, they've taken up the tracks all the way farther down from Sunnyberg on, but they haven't.
I know, they still check the lights and whatnot, and.
So one of our circulations, I mean, will be the railway company. I don't, CN, CN usually doesn't get that correctly, but we will circulate, circulate to them to get their comment. In my experience with railways, we will be very happy with a retard setback, regardless on, of how often trains are actually, it's a fucking that I expect.
All right, thank you. So, so far, you, what did you want, you wanted to do them both together?
Well, just, yeah, like, move it up that little bit to do it like a special meeting or whatever we got to do on the 8th.
Oh, I see.
To try to get it done a little sooner and do them both at the same time and in the same timeframe. same timeframe.
Okay. So what, uh, what date is that?
August eighth.
August eighth?
And one more minor point, South County is proposing a one point five meter.
Meter. Yeah, that, that end is really important.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I need a.
I caught it in the background. Yeah. I knew I said it verbally.
Perfect. Okay, so if we could, then I need a few motions here. I get the first, uh, first motion be the first reading for bylaw two thousand twenty three oh seven amendment to land use bylaw two thousand seventeen oh two. If I can get that first reading.
Motion.
Done, all favor? That is carried. Second motion I would require is administration to advertise the bylaw two thousand twenty three for two consecutive weeks in the town's website and the local newspaper.
I'd combine that to, to advertise over two consecutive weeks in the website and local paper and to hold a public hearing, uh, on a special meeting, uh, August eighth prior to the county meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that. All favor? That is carried. So that deals with nine point one and then we will move on to nine point two, uh, bylaw two thousand twenty three oh eight. And there we go. Once again, if you would, I'm just doing that one there.
Thank you so much. Um, this one's a little more complicated. Um, again, it is an amendment to land use bylaw two zero one seven dash zero two. Um, and Daniel Pilon, and I'm sorry if I was down to that one. I believe he is here tonight, um, applied for land use bylaw amendment on April seventeenth, twenty twenty three on lot six and seven, block one, plan one six two, four two five zero, no one adds five two oh two, forty eighth Avenue and five two four, forty eighth Avenue. You'll see, um, the map shows that it is a rough approximation. This is not property land map. The applicant intends to place a prefabricated home on the lot. Um, note that again, the development permit for that, should this be successful, would come through administration not council. Um, so the property is currently designated medium density residential or R two. As per the land use bylaw, the properties surrounding the lands are T S to the west, R two to the north, R two to the east, and R one to the south. The municipal development plan indicates the subject property is medium density residential. The applicant has indicated an intention to consolidate the lot and place a prefabricated home on the property. Prefabricated homes do not have a definition in the land use bylaw. Through discussions with the applicant, the intent potential land owner, land purchaser and the manufacturer, town administration understands that the home to be placed on the lot is categorized as housing manufactured in the land use bylaw. We have to use the definitions in our land use bylaw, not definitions of a home manufacturer. We are bound by what is in our bylaw. The applicant, um, sorry, the, through the review, the intended future development on the subject properties and a past subdivision and development appeal board decision pertaining to S D A B, S D A B file two zero one six dash zero zero one, which relates to development permit three one five, three one five dash sixteen dash D zero zero one, there appears to be considerable confusion about these definitions. So I'm going to go through these definitions. I do want to note that if council wants to talk specifically about the S D A B file and that hearing, I do suggest going in camera on that as it is pertaining to legal discussion. But I'll continue on at this point in terms of these definitions. We have four key definitions in our land use bylaw. Again, we have to follow. The first is housing manufactured, which means a transportable factory-built residential building containing one dwelling unit suitable for long-term occupancy, designed to be movable, transported on its own wheels or chassis or other means, and arriving at a site ready for occupancy except for incidental operations such as placement on a foundation support and connection to utilities. Manufactured homes shall have pitch roofs, E and shall conform to C A N slash C S A, N two forty, M H series and A two seven seven certification standard. Housing mobile definition means a factory constructed dwelling, detached dwelling unit with an integral frame ready to readily relocatable singly or in double modules. Due to the age of the homes, they do not meet the Canadian Standards Association A two seven seven standard or building code standard. These are like your nineteen seventies trailers that we think of. They don't meet standards. That's, they're defined because they're not in the, the land use bylaw as an option. Because they don't meet building codes, you can't move them around anymore. You can live in one if you currently have one, but you can't move it to a new location and get approval. Housing modular means a building containing one dwelling unit built in a factory and transported to site to be permanently installed on a foundation and which appears indistinguishable in design and finish from a stick-built house and does not include housing manufactured or housing mobile. So we also have housing single detached means a residential dwelling, a residential building containing one dwelling unit which is intended as a permanent residence. Single detached dwellings must be of new construction and be physically separated from any other residential building. Single detached dwellings do not include a manufactured home. So the confusion that we are understanding is between really the housing modular and the housing manufactured. When we define housing modular, it is just a different way to construct a single detached home. Housing manufactured is a modern day, and they are very different than the nineteen seventy trailers, so I'm not trying to imply they're the same. It is a modern day movable home similar to a trailer. Again, they're very different, but that's the best way to explain it. The only district in our bylaw that housing manufactured is currently permitted is within the manufactured home subdivision land use definition. The land use bylaw housing modular is listed as discretionary use in low density, R one, medium density, R two, and is permitted within the manufactured home subdivision. The way that the modular housing definition has been interpreted is it is basically your, your site inspections still happen on site because you might have your walls put together in a factory, but your walls are brought out as individual pieces and assembled onsite. So in the end, it's a way of constructing a single family home. It is no different than a single family home. Whereas housing manufactured, your site, your safety code inspections occur in the factory where it's built. So you have certification from the factory. Our inspections group, our safety code providers do not recertify that. They will certify the connections to the town facilities, but they do not recertify that unit. So in reviewing this application, administration undertook additional review of similar definitions in land use bylaws throughout the process. I will fully say we did not review every bylaw in the entire province. We've worked with many and we had discussions with our safety code inspection group who have been fantastic to work with. So based on that rule, that rule, that review, many bylaws contain the definition of housing manufactured, but they do not contain the definition of housing modular. Thereby, thereby what we're recommending is removing that definition of housing modular because it is causing the root cause confusion. We also note that additional information pertaining to the development permit that farmers manufactured homes should be added to our land use bylaw. This is common in others and it talks about stating that safety code stickers are required, the municipal affairs label, or that sticker we require, the model number and the serial number. And that serial number brings me to another important point. Stick-built homes, regular single family homes don't have a model number. So it's an important distinction on these definitions. And so based on the definitions contained that's within our bylaw and our interpretation that housing modular is indistinguishable from housing single detached, the inclusion of this definition appears to be causing confusion and therefore the definition of housing modular and all references should be removed from the bylaw. Um, and I do want to again acknowledge inspection group and their willingness to work with us and to help us make sure that we have it stretched from a safety code perspective. So you're recommending. Um, in order to clarify the definitions, we recommend amending the land use bylaw to delete section six, two point two, seventy six, housing modular from the list of definitions in, in sections and remove all references to housing modular in the land use bylaw, including table twelve point four one, twelve point five one, and twelve point seven one, and actually the adopted seven and one. We also recommend changing the housing manufactured, um, the language in it. So one of the, the changes is, um, false reasons. Housing manufactured means a transportable factory-built residential building containing one dwelling unit suitable for long-term occupancy, designed to be movable, transported on its own wheels or chassis or other means, and arriving at site ready for occupancy except for incidental operations such as placement on foundations and connection to utilities. Manufactured homes shall have pitch roofs and E and shall conform to C A N slash C S A, N two thirty, M H series and/or A two seven seven certified standard. That or is new as well, the next part is also new, where a component of a building is assembled off the building site in a manner that it cannot be reviewed onsite. Offsite reviews shall be carried out to determine compliance of safety code. We also recommend, um, an amendment to two point two, seven five, housing mobile, which says means a factory constructed detached dwelling unit with an integral frame readily relocatable singly or in double modules, modules. Due to the age of the home, they may not meet the Canadian Standards Association C S A, A two seven seven standard or current building code standard. Safety codes did recommend that we add the word may into that sentence. There are circumstances where they put, um, very rare, and so they suggest redoing from that. However, it's not listed as a use anywhere, so it's still not something that would be readily easy to come into our minds. We also recommend amending, um, amending section nine point five one to read development permits for a manufactured home unit shall have third-party certification from an accredited inspection agency, including Canadian Standard Association, Intertech, or quality auditing institute. Those are the three main companies that do the, um, safety codes in the factories where these are built. A municipal affairs label or a C S A label, a module, a model number, and a manufactured home serial number. That's the text meant. In order to, and those are meant to clarify the type of home, we feel that that is a very important part of this request due to the history of the confusion around modular manufactured. The other part of this is key to what the applicant is actually asking for, and that is to be able to put a manufactured home onto these lots. We are recommending that lot six and lot seven, block one, plan one six two, four two five zero be re-designated from R two to M H S, thus allowing the future placement of housing manufactured on the property as per schedule A in the bylaw. And so our recommendation is that council provide first reading to bylaw two zero two three dash zero eight, amendment to land use bylaw two zero one seven dash zero two. We also recommend advertising the bylaw, um, for two consecutive weeks and on the town's website and the local newspaper. And then, um, as with the other bylaw that we just discussed, we recommend, um, holding a special meeting after the committee of the whole meeting on August eighth, um, for a public hearing.
All right. Thank you. Daniel, I see you there. Do you have anything you want to speak to us at all?
Uh, well, actually, she's pretty much picked everything up. Um, actually, the essential buyers are right behind here too.
I see.
They, um, we've been working on this now for probably four months, I think. So the sooner we can get this done, these people were hoping to get in because no fly. I don't know if that's going to happen.
I just, uh, just wanted to give you the opportunity to, you know, address it and we will go through the motions here, the rest, where you have to come in.
Yeah, I'll see if this guy would be happy to move the street in a bylaw two thousand twenty three oh eight and land use bylaw.
Yep. All favor? It's carried. And then the next motion is to advertise and then set a, uh, public hearing on August eighth along with the other one. All favor? Carried. There we go. Well, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. We'll, we'll go from there and see what happens after that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
This process of land use bylaw.
It is.
And we want to make sure we have done right. Want to make sure that we did it the right way for future, uh, view and want to make sure that the important role, who we want to do the job for. Welcome to the hood.
And I again want to comment on inspection script. They've been fantastic. I really appreciate it, Brian.
Yep. All right. Thank you for that. Hey, moving on. Um, we are at nine point three. Um, the bylaw subdivision and development authorities. Is that you again?
Why not?
All right.
Bring your worship team, the whole agenda.
I'm sure glad you came with us today, otherwise we, uh, we didn't, uh.
We thought it was a good time for me to come meet you guys all in person too. Um, and apparently we just thought, let's load up the whole agenda. Um, and so, which to be honest, is a very cost-effective way to have it. So I, I appreciate that for, um, so this bylaw, the subdivision and development authority, everyone has to have them in every municipality. You guys didn't have one. We don't know why. Just came to our attention last week when Donna and I were talking about something and Jesse's like, we don't have that. So I asked for confirmation of who does subdivision, that's how it came up. And so this bylaw is required, um, has supposed to have been in place a time ago since Madonna time. Um, I don't know why we have not been able to find one, but we haven't. So, um, we have had this bylaw provided to us from another municipality that had one in place. And, um, essentially what it does is it creates the subdivision authority, so any subdivision, administration reviews it, and we provide a recommendation for approval or not. And council actually makes the decision. You become the subdivision authority at that point in council meetings. Um, and so, hopefully give you a report and information, but you guys get to me. Um, and so we also go on to the development authority and that is the C A O or delegate. And, um, that's because council only can be a development authority in a direct control district. So C A O is.
So how did we go in the past?
Um, we just assumed frankly that this bylaw existed.
I see.
And that's how it came up that we discovered it's not. Um, and so we don't name the C A O by name. The C A Os can change, staff can change. Um, and basically it just says C A O does it. And again, council cannot be the development authority except in a direct control district. So you have to name somebody. Um, and typically in smaller towns that don't have full-time planners, it's your C A O. And if she's gone for a week, she can give that delegation to somebody else. Um, and, and things don't get.
All right. Thank you for that. So anybody have any comments or anything before we make the motion here? Can I get a motion to get first reading for bylaw two thousand twenty three oh nine, subdivision and development authorities?
I can make that motion.
Tracy, favor? That is carried. All right. Uh, correspondence, we have a couple of correspondence and, uh, one is, uh, ten point one is from Our Lady of Victory Cemetery Service and, uh, basically they're just, uh, telling us that they have a mass celebration on, uh, July twelfth at six thirty followed by a group cemetery for listening graves. Uh, I guess they're, I see you're Donnie, they're asking us to, uh, anybody here want to pen? Is that basically?
For sure. And there might be a little date change. They kind of alluded to that a little while ago, but yeah, they, they have the service ready at their cemetery. Uh, they recognize that, you know, be comfortable for everyone. I'll be going.
Yeah.
But certainly all council, all.
Certainly. All right. Thank you for that. And then, uh, ten point two, letter from Mr. McKyver. Basically just a letter from Rick McKyver, uh, announcing that he's back as the Minnesota Minister of Municipal Affairs and he's looking forward to working straight down over municipalities and collaborating on areas of mutual interest. So if I can get a motion to accept the correspondence, uh, ten point one, ten point two. Thank you, Tori. All favor? That is carried. And at this point, um, any public comments? Anybody in the gallery has any? All favor? That is carried. And at this point, any public comments? Anybody in the gallery has any of the, before we take a recess and then go on camera, is anybody trying to bring anything else up? Now's the time. Ray, you can go ahead.
Yeah, a couple things. One, if you can, municipal, the COVID is being defined, welcome to both these. I was a stranger in this area and I was approaching that sign, I want to say, oh, I don't want to have a cup of tea in this place, it's a dump. Why can't something be done about it?
The graph?
Whatever, it should look good.
I think that's.
You go towards town, it's a big community, you go there and it's a nice entrance way, you go together, it's all nice. Yeah, I know, I know they're bigger areas, but something could be done on that area.
Yeah, of course, we could do. Did it improve that?
The other thing is, the trails, there's a number of trees that are down on the trails and they've been suffering with a disease, it's not, not pine beetle, it's something else. I mean, destroying the trees that are falling down and all these birds or spores are falling everywhere and.
I think, say, Adonia, you've got an answer to that, you've been talking to, we're looking for an arborist that.
We have an arborist and that's in direct relation to council Corey's comments, we have an arborist gonna come in and take a look and let us know what to do. Some of those trees are not on town land that are happening, but I'm not, I'm reserving comments until we have an arborist, Andrew and I will accompany that arborist to look at all these trees to find out what's going on. We certainly won't cut them and drag them because we don't know what that is, we have suspicious block knots, but you can't just cut them, drag them all over the place, they have to be done a certain way so that we don't wreck the rest of the trails. So we are, we are on that, we hope within the next week or so, we'll be looking at what we should, getting our expertise.
Is that just one, typically, a species, like is it spruce, is it popular, is that a combination or?
Yeah.
It's possible.
Depending on the numbers, um, comments by, you know, people that stand around about it, that they want to enjoy the trails, that's the thing.
No, you're right, and Debbie came to see me yesterday and we had a very nice talk about it and I said the same thing to her, I said, I'm loathe to cut anything down until we have an arborist's opinion. And council Corey mentioned that's been wet in there, it's time we get in there next week, probably take a look at it when arborist gets here, get a professional opinion. And that opinion could mean leave them alone, that opinion could be kind of down and dispose of them in a certain way, that could be anything, so, and then leave them till next spring, I don't know what that is, but we'll bring that report back to council in public, like you know, if we have it.
Thanks for that, also. Anything else to show?
I just wanted to make a couple of public statements as all. So I know I watched the last meeting and Beverly Kane presented the presentation in regard to the health of communities, the mental health grant, and I know that administration had made note of Carol Rumpel and her contributions, and I just wanted to make note of very rashes contributions to that because he did a lot of work on it. And then the second thing I wanted to state was July 8th, community is in bloom and the grocery store are holding a fundraiser for those archery residents, so just hope everyone can come out and support that.
All right, thank you for that. Anything else? If not, if I take a motion, take about a 10-minute recess before we come back in camera? 8:03? All favor?
That is carried. Wow, Rick, that was.
That was a lot.
That's kind of, kind of the first for us as far as.
So, why is the, Hilon's in particular? Yeah, so we might have more people coming, we can go have the next one. I think it goes back to that definition and the confusion around those definitions